Called a meeting to order. It is seven o'clock here in Litchfield, according to my watch. Um, let me see, called the order. We're just calling a meeting to order. We currently have three members. Uh, we'll start with the roll call. Uh, John Deveraux, acting chair, uh, member.
John Burdell, member.
Jerry Sorenson, member.
Jeff Blackwell, bill inspector.
Okay, our first, our first, um, case is case number zero nine one eight two oh two three dash one. Variance from LZO article eight hundred dot zero zero, section eight oh one dot zero zero to permit parking in the northern commercial district where parking is not a permitted use. The name of the applicant is Ronissa Beauchard Henin. Owner of property Ronald R. Beauchard and Ronissa Beauchard Henin. Location of property is four forty-six Charles Bancroft Highway, Litchfield, New Hampshire, map twenty lot thirteen. Uh, would you like to, um, sit up here where the microphone works? So before we get started, uh, we normally have, um, five members of the zoning board of adjustments. Uh, today we have a quorum, we have three, um, but it will require for you to, um, receive a variance for all three of us to vote yes. To support it. You can choose to, um, delay the decision and move it till next month, but there's still a chance there won't be more than three or four. So it's really your call whether you feel comfortable with three or you'd like to, um, push it to the next, next meeting.
Um, considering time is of the essence, we can't move it to next month. So thank you.
Yes, that's what I just, I just saw that, but I wanted to make sure that you had the option to do so.
Okay.
So, um, the variance is requested from section eight hundred oh one zoning ordinance is being requested to allow parking in the northern commercial zone of Litchfield, New Hampshire. Property abutting four forty-six highway was granted a variance for parking on September eighth, twenty twenty-two. Parking will be a seasonally temporary of use during local scheduled events only. This will be controlled by a flagger wearing appropriate safety gear for visibility. Foot traffic will not be accessing, accessing Charles Bancroft Highway. A designated path will be clearly marked and illuminated for entry to the event. In the past thirteen years, there's been no need for Litchfield Police or Litchfield Fire to respond to this address for any reasons during this event. Having multiple parking options during this scheduled seasonal event will ease the traffic on Charles Bancroft Highway. And this was your, your letter that you wrote.
Yes.
We'll begin by, um, providing an opportunity for you to speak to it other than your letter and then, um, and then you can speak to the, to the variance cases of which, what, this is what we would vote on, the five different, um, cases are the, the variance, um, items within the, the variance.
Okay.
You have an opportunity to, to have an opening remark and then discuss each one of these, um, with the hopes that we will agree with you and, and vote in your favor.
Okay, um, we, uh, have been parking for the past, uh, about thirteen years now and we've, we've never had to obtain a variance. This is our first time. Um, we've had no problems. Every year it's gotten a bit better. We have it illuminated. We have walking paths. We use walkie-talkies, um, to, um, from, from our flagger to our parker to ensure that everything is seamless. Uh, we, this year will not have anyone walking down Charles Bancroft Highway as that is quite a concern. Um, and they will be walking to, through a illuminated path on our property from the front and from the back. I'm not sure what else I should be noting at this point. Uh, like I said, this is, this is brand new to us. This is, this has never been required before. I'm not sure why it's being required at this time. Um, we are located directly next door to Spooky World. Um, and.
Do you have a copy of this that you can?
I do.
See, um, if there's no further sort of discussion, you can go into each of the five.
Yes, not really. I mean, my next door neighbor, Rose Medina, he is here as well and is, is seeking a variance. Um, so it doesn't appear that we have anyone next to us that is, is against us parking. It, our property is not altered by any means at all. Um, we are parking on gravel as well as, as as our grass. Um, we have it clearly marked and, um, and illuminated. You know, safety is, is our utmost concern.
Okay, would you like to, um, cover the five different criteria for the variance?
Sure. Um, do I just read it off?
If, if you'd like to.
Sure, the variance, um, will, will not be contrary to the public interest because it is limited nature of use during scheduled local events. It is controlled by a flag attendant wearing appropriate safety gear for visibility. Foot traffic will not be accessing the main road. A designated path will be clearly marked and illuminated for entry to the event. Um, number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, observed because the property is located in a commercial zone. The use is to support a local growing organization and it provides revenue for our community. Uh, substantial justice is done because the use is subject to specified plan dates and there will be no impact to the land or the surrounding neighbors. The values of the surrounding properties are not diminished because there will be no alterations to the land or nature and it will be used seasonally temporarily. Um, for the perp, uh, do I have to read that whole? Would you like me to read that whole?
Number five.
Number five. For the purposes of the sub-paragraph unnecessary hardship, no, I don't really need.
Actually, go right to number two. Actually, one and two, I think, great.
Yeah. So the property use is a reasonable one because the surrounding properties will not be impacted by this event. There will be no adjustments to the existing property. Rose Medina, the property owner of four forty-two Charles Bancroft Highway is fully supporting this endeavor, endeavor. Um, and, uh, our property is commercially, is commercial use in a commercial zone. It will be used to support a local commercial business where extra parking is needed due to the demand. Having multiple parking options available will ease the traffic on Charles Bancroft Highway for this event. And as most of you know, that, the traffic is substantial. So by having multiple parking options, it does help to ease the traffic as long as everything is smooth and we have been working diligently to make sure that that happens.
So that last section was the variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
And I believe that's all of the five criteria.
Yep.
Are there any questions from the board?
Um, go ahead. No, that's, to refresh my memory, the variance we gave on four four, uh, the one adjacent property, we put a timeframe on it. Uh, we did a seasonal thing, right?
Right, that's gonna be my ques- so, um, I'm unfamiliar. What, what events?
For Spooky World.
Oh, this, this is support Spooky World? Okay, okay.
Yes, yes, we live right next door to Spooky World. Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if those are different events or whatever. Okay, so it, your, then your timing of your events is the same time Spooky World.
Correct, it's twenty-two days. Yes, if, if we even do all twenty-two days. It's, a lot of it's pending the weather.
In demand.
You know, I, I mean, there's a lot of factors, um, involved.
The, the second thing I, that I love was I, I know in the past, the parking there has been challenging for traffic.
Yes, it has.
So in the plan, how is that adjusted?
So we have incorporated walkie-talkies. We have a walkie-talkie from our flagger to our parking attendant. We close it off. We only take X amount, we only take what we can fill up in our driveway and park those cars accordingly. We flag off everyone else down the street so that this, the traffic is moving constantly because we know that if we don't move the traffic appropriately, someone's gonna shut us down and we don't want that to happen. So we are trying to make sure that, um, that that does not happen.
Okay.
Um, and, and we do, the people that are working our events is my son who's been doing it for, is, for a lot longer than he would like to. Um, myself and, uh, and some other friends that have been doing it for multiple years and know how important it is to make sure that the flow of traffic, um, is moving.
So what is the actual event you're having?
Spooky World, spooky, we live right next to, door to Spooky World. So we have property that, that is abutting Spooky World. Not everyone wants to park in a, in a cornfield, understandably. We have, we are legitimately here and right here. Correct, correct, yes.
Okay, so you're, you're providing support to Spooky World. Okay, alright, yeah. I was just trying to figure out exactly what you were, you're just providing.
Yes, we're just providing parking for them, yes. Just a little bit easier for them to get through, navigate through and it benefits, you know.
Cause I was trying to figure out which event I missed.
No, no, Spooky World, yeah, Spooky World.
What did I miss? Okay, alright, there's something, there's something else going on?
No, no, just Spooky World. So again, it's just twenty-two days that hopefully, yes.
I don't have any more questions.
Questions, John? Questions?
No additional questions, thank you.
Um, are there any one from the public that would like to speak for or against, um, this variance? Would you come up and introduce yourself, please?
Oh, are you, Michael Alcomando, co-owner of Spooky World and Mel's Funway Park. That's you before. Uh, I'm in favor of the parking. I have no issues. I just wanna make sure it's held to the same standards that we have to. Everything needs to be illuminated as bright as ours. Uh, I don't think it can just be, we'll make sure nobody walks on three A. I think it needs to be roped off. Like our front has to be roped off so nobody can go on three A. Um, I think that also means that somebody should be posted right by Strawberry Lane at the end of the night because as customers leave, they're gonna go wherever they wanna go. So I think somebody should be there just to make sure they guide them back to that side of the rope again to make sure that they are staying, uh, off of three A because if there are problems, they don't get a phone call, we get a phone call. Uh, if something bad happens, they're not gonna say their name in the newspaper. They're not gonna say my name in the newspaper. So, uh, as to the traffic flow, the only problems that we've seen in the past are right there by the street, um, by where the houses are. Because obviously having a cornfield, I can put thousands of cars in at any time I want. In a lot, it takes them a little bit longer to get the cars in. I'm still all in favor of it. I just wanna make sure that if there is a backup that they have to understand, send the cars down the street and then start to park more cars in their lot. They're gonna fill up no matter what because it's a small lot and I want them to fill up. I have no problem with that. I want people to benefit from Spooky World coming to the town. I always have, I always will. Um, so those are just a few of the things. Strawberry Lane is the driveway right next door, which we own. Uh, Wayne and I have no issues if they wanna direct their customers from their yard straight onto Strawberry Lane to walk right down the driveway, which takes them to the ticket booth. As long as they put a light there, I have no issues with that. It'll seem more official for the people coming from their yard to go straight down and move right to the ticket booth. So I have no issues with that. Um, the only thing that I would ask is that any signage that's used is just parking. I don't want it to say official Spooky World parking because then that means that somehow I'm tied into it and I'm granted to it and now it becomes a liability for me, which it can't be. It has to be, you know, their parking lot, not Spooky World's parking lot, that's all. I think those are, I think simple, easy, which they seem to do. I just wanna make sure that they're, they're followed through.
May I say something on that? Um, we absolutely do not put that we are official Spooky World parking. We do have a parking sign. That's it. Um, when we do, when we do have an illuminated walkway, it is not on the end of Strawberry Lane. It's actually a little bit further out. I, I did draw up a, I don't know if you saw that, but the path to the event is a little further down, not that, that the very end where the street is on Strawberry Lane. It's a little further in, so people aren't, the people are walking across the front of our driveway as well as from the side, they're walking across our yard closer to the house versus the street. So that shouldn't be a problem whatsoever with the front. Um, the back, I had been actually talking with Kendrick about keeping possibly a little opening somewhere in the back for people to walk through. And I know that was your concern last year when I spoke with Wayne, um, about having people walk up on the street.
Well, the problem that might happen is you might have customers that are in the parking lot that are gonna use that thinking that's how they get in.
Right.
So you're gonna have to have huge signs that say not an entrance or something because I don't want that.
Absolutely. Absolutely, yes.
Do you have an issue with that? If they come out of the back, out into the parking lot?
It's a lot. Um, I, I haven't seen the diagram yet, so I'd like to see it.
Yes, yes, the first.
If you mind, can I just take a picture?
Sure, you can. It's a double fluffie actually. Actually, it's hard to see that, but this is, we were actually going to be putting a path to the event to the side here, but I think that that is a little confusing for your, for your clients, your customers.
John, can you list the path?
Well, yeah, I mean, it'll end up becoming a problem for you and not for us.
That will be a little bit concerning here, so possibly back here, but we figured we would discuss that with you where you feel that would be the best option for us to have a path through. Where, obviously, we would like to work together.
That one I think is too difficult because we'll have our customers walking into their yard. That I don't think can be there if they wanna do something here. But there needs to be some type of signage here with an arrow that points them down to the ticket booth. If not, their backyard's gonna be filled up with people.
Absolutely. Right.
So I think that has to, you know, I don't have an issue with that. As long as the correct signage is there, I think it needs to be arrows with a sign that says ticket booth this way.
Sure.
No entrance, no exit, you know, private yard maybe.
Mm-hmm. No problem with that.
And then just, I don't know who, who would oversee to make sure that everything is being done, that it's lighting correctly, the ropes are up correctly, that people aren't on three A. Is that you, Jeff? If it's one more thing added to your, one more, okay.
Now, I have a question for you. If you would like us to put ropes out, um, that is not our yard. Obviously, the town owns or the state owns the, the property from the street into ours. There's that twenty, fifteen, twenty feet.
We still put a rope right on the road like that. We still do the same thing.
But that's okay. I just wanna make sure that that's okay for us to do that. Okay.
It's temporary, right, so, yeah. We were required to do that.
Okay, sure.
Strawberry Lane.
Uh, Strawberry Lane is the driveway that goes down to, what house is that, Wayne? What number is that?
That's further, further south.
Strawberry is right next to like our laser tag. You know the laser tag?
Yep.
So there's a, a road or driveway between their property, our laser tag. There's a driveway that, we own that also because we own the house back there.
Yes, correct.
Four, four, eight. Yeah, so four, four, eight. So it's in between. We own it, so it's all right. So we're not borrowing somebody else's. It's, it's our land.
Jeff, there's no issue. Temporary rope on the edge of the road is not an issue as long as it's not a inherent tra- not bothering the traffic law.
I can't answer for the state. State's right away, so.
So if they set the post in as far as where the mailboxes are, I'd be fine. At least temporarily.
On the grass, yeah. So.
I think, yeah. What if we just had a sign that said, you know, if we have a stake in a sign that says no, you know, not permitted or something like that, you know, deterring people, but,
It just doesn't stop the customer.
But most of the ti- I mean, we are out there and people are, they're, they don't know where they're going. So we obviously show them where to go and we have everything designated, yes.
Some of those details aren't really, um, part of this variance discussion, although they're important to coordinate with, with Mel's and your activities, so.
We can stipulate saying, we can take all precautions to avoid customers approaching or walking down the driveway, yeah.
That would be more, more like.
Whatever they decide how to do it, that's how they do it.
Yeah. Alright, thank you. Any more?
Yeah, no, no, no.
Are there any other abutters that would like to speak for or against?
That would be me, Wayne Caulfield.
Can you introduce yourself?
Uh, yes, my name is Wayne Caulfield. Oh, yeah, I'm one of the co-owners of Spooky World.
Okay, thank you.
At four fifty-four Charles Bancroft Highway. I'd like to admit, uh, uh, a minute to report, just to speak to my business partner in private for a moment, if the board would allow it for, for less than five minutes. We did, we did get, uh, pretty short notice on this and we didn't have time to prepare and talk to our attorneys or, like, this is a lot for me to, like, comprehend. I'm just shocked that, like, I, I didn't know about the thing in the back and I'm just trying to think of, like, what is the negative? I don't know what that is yet and I'm not saying that it's a negative. I just don't know. It's a lot, you know what I mean? For me, we didn't have time. We just, the, the notice went out September twelfth and the date was incorrect in the notice, uh, for the record, um, of this hearing, by the way, on the notice. So, actually, we don't even have notice, but we're just here as a courtesy to let the thing go forward and we're not here to stop anything, you know? But I just wanna note that, that we did not have time to see our attorneys, but I would love to just have a five-minute sidebar with my business partner because, like, this is thrown at me about the back and I just wanna know, like, what are the ramifications on this? As if we did go it someday, I'm just saying that, let's say it's fifteen years from now, we go to sell that property and then we have this egress coming back and forth from, from our property into our private Strawberry Lane. How does that all work legally? I don't know.
We're not granting egress. They're like, we're not doing that at all.
What we're doing is determining whether.
But how, but how does a customer get there? They have to go into our property then?
There's no egress. We're allowing, yeah.
It's a path, okay.
There's no legal, there's no legal egress.
If Spooky World goes away, then this goes away, obviously. There's no right away.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
Well, one of the, one of the re- I, I think one of the restrictions that we put on Mel's at the time, we were probably for the same restrictions here. This is the time period you could do it and that's it.
Yes.
If you wanna outside of that time period, you're gonna have to come back and ask.
And we are willing, I am willing to work with you of where you feel that it is a safe entry and exit for all of us.
I think one of the questions, I think, what Wayne's thinking about is we're gonna have to just run it by the insurance company also because we're adding people from your parking lot to the back parking lot. We just wanna make sure that everybody who we do business with is kosher and saying it's fine, that's all. We didn't know that, again, like Wayne said, we didn't know about this. So Wayne called me an hour and a half ago and let me know that this was happening. Somebody called us.
Well, how were they getting there before?
Uh, they were walking through the front, through, um, Charles Bancroft Highway and I will say, it was thirteen years with not a problem. There was never anyone that got injured, any, any fall down, eh, nothing. There's never been a problem. And I understand that they are bringing in a lot more people that now than they were in the past and we are trying to provide a very safe environment for our customers as well as theirs. And we're willing to work with them with, with that.
I think our concern is safety and we get the, puts the place on safety. So, I, I think we, I mean, John, can we afford the five minutes or do we just?
Yes, because we can continue to get input. Um, we will close, uh, input and then we can reopen it if you had something else to add before we vote. So grab your time right now.
Yes, thank you very much. I just wanna make sure that we, we sometimes make rash decisions and we're just not that, you know what I mean? This is like a, a little bit of a, uh, I, I didn't see this yet and I just wanna make sure that I'm comfortable that we're not making, uh, I just wanna say again for the record, we do support the neighbors in parking. We do. I even said it in a, in a letter that I sent, uh, last year about our concerns, you know? But I'm not gonna say that everything was hunky-dory before though.
Not always. I, I.
Not at all last year. Last year was bad.
Last year I was not involved at all. I will say that right now and I understand. And I think that that was kind of thrown together last year. We have a lot more lights. We have solar lights. We have spotlights. We started putting up in the rain today. Um, we do, we are going to completely illuminate that property to make sure it is safe because it's also on me as it is you. I am now the property owner, so I have to cover myself.
Okay, yeah, sure. Okay, that'll be great. We can have five minutes. That'd be wonderful. Thank you, thank you. That'd be great. Thank you.
Do we have any more, um, input from the abutters that are for or against the variance? Nope. We can take this time to deliberate.
Yeah, we can.
So.
Without closing input, that's fine.
Um, any thoughts, John, Jerry?
So I, I just.
Go ahead, Jeff. Yes, please.
So I know one of the concerns that was brought to me was getting the cars off of the street. So it sounds like whatever, however the process is happening or has been happening, and I don't know if it's every year or just recent years, whatever, but the process of collecting at the road and getting people at the road is what's, one of the things contributing slowing down the traffic at the road. So as opposed to, you know, the Mel's parking, they're in, they're off the road, paid and directed type of thing. So if, if the process we're getting the cars in, letting them drive in, just something that, you know, that's part of the safety, obviously. Cars stopping at the road is the safety concern.
So I think, in the cornfield, in Mel's cornfield, that definitely, they gotta go way in before they pay and they get parked. That's definitely off the road. But I think what I heard, what you were saying was they're pulling in so many cars in the driveway, flagging the rest of the rest on, processing, getting them parked and pulling more in.
Yes.
Cause like, you're, you're gonna fill up no matter what.
We've learned that that works for us successfully, yes.
So as long as they're doing that and that's being managed well, I think that solves that problem. Cause I think the parking, um, the parking across, that used to be across the street from Mel's, that no longer is being used. That was a challenge because they, they had the same problem. They come in, they were two cars.
They're crossing the road.
Yeah, they're crossing the road, they were getting two cars deep and now it's become a challenge too. So it sounds like they're addressing it. I mean, we can always say, you know, this is the trial year. If it works, it works. But at that point, it's, I think it's a traffic enforcement problem. It's probably gonna be a, be a police issue if they can't get the traffic flowing.
Well, I, I also think that it's very hard to not have a traffic backup. When you have that many people coming for an event and, uh, even if you have three or four lots, you're still gonna have a traffic backup. Absolutely. The flow of traffic is not just gonna ease all the way through. It's, it's busy. It's a certain time that it is, is swamped. And so I think that Spooky World has done a really good job of trying to get people off the road as we have too and we're doing the best that we can do given the situation.
I mean, without any direct feedback from the police department or fire department about traffic concerns, you know, I don't know. Right?
Well, I would hope that they would, the police would, you know, if they needed to provide a detail or whatever, we would.
I think we had one incident last year where the police came by and just spoke to us briefly and just said, hey, keep moving along and after that it's kinda fine for the rest of the month, so.
Yeah, he gave us a couple tips to do it, to, like Jeff was saying, collecting the money. So we're actually doing it out in the back and that solved a lot of the problems.
Timely will pull in five cars at a time.
And then flag the rest off, yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. Well, we can delay for a couple of minutes and then we can.
Yeah, I mean, I think from a deliberate, I, I guess, I'm in favor of it as long as it's the same criteria you put against Mel's.
Exactly.
It's, it's seasonal. We know it's seasonal. Most residents know it's seasonal. They know the traffic's there when, when the event's on and so people avoid it if they don't want it stopped.
If you're not going, you avoid it.
We only do Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. We don't even do Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday.
So that's all low traffic.
Yeah.
So their concern is you got people walking across their property from here as opposed to walking down the street? Is that what I'm forgetting?
No, what I think their concern was is that they felt that if we allowed this, this was a legal binding easement. It's not a legal binding easement. They're directing traffic.
No, all, are we, all we're approving is the allowed, the allowed parking.
Parking, parking, yep.
We're not, we're not dictating.
Yeah, these other, these other details provide a more safe, um.
Right, we can provide the, the detail and I, and I, I think temporary pedestrian slash vehicle control is well within the state or county or whatever. It's well within the, um, I guess, yeah, with, yeah, your ability to do that. So I don't think the issue's. The only issue might come up is if you did something that you thought was crowd control and someone thought it was actually making you worse condition.
Yeah, then the police would address it and then, yeah.
It's like you said, you'd make the adjustments and.
Absolutely.
Yeah, cause we're just here to decide whether you can park there or not.
Exactly.
Jeff, we miss anything? Are we missing anything? From a building perspective, as owning, we're only granting a variance to temporary parking.
Correct.
I'm trying to think, didn't we, they were on a cornfield. They put all, they laid all the corn down and then there was something about within a certain amount of time, they, was it maquestrans that comes in there and?
They laid a.
Tills the la- yeah, tills the land and everything, so.
Monday day, two weeks ago, last week.
I know it's your property, but.
Uh, they just did it, like a day or two ago.
It was just done, yes. Yes, actually last night. I believe it was last night, yes.
Yeah, they were there last night. Yeah, they were running late, yeah.
Yeah, it's been late, it's been a late time season.
Yes, yes, yeah, yes.
I'm sorry, I'll finish that. All right. One of the things that we discussed was we just want time to, uh, just make sure that this all works out well with our insurance company. I do wanna ask if you have insurance because I'm just gonna tell you what the protocol is. Just, I'm just gonna tell you what our concerns are with the parking, if we're right or wrong or whatever it is. If someone was walking down on three A, first of all, it'd be a tragedy if that person got injured or hurt and thank God it hasn't happened. And last year, it was at risk of happening and it didn't and we, we kinda got by. If that did happen, it is definitely injurious, very injurious to the name, brand name Spooky World. The headlines are not gonna be down that we're at the Beauchard property and someone got hit by a car here. It's gonna be we're here at Spooky World and someone was injured. And that's also not only bad for the person who, who's injured, but also very bad for our brand name, which we're very protective about. That's one thing that I just wanted to discuss. Um, the other thing is I just wanna make sure you're fully insured in this process, one hundred percent. Because if someone, what happens typically with almost all lawsuits that Michael and I are unfortunately experts in now, after all the years at Spooky World, is typically they file one day before, uh, the two-year period. It's usually the day before. We get served in the property. Someone shows up, and here you go, here you're signed. And they want that two years to elapse because they don't want anyone to remember anything. So if someone does get hurt in your property, was it the Spooky World parking lot or was it the neighbor's parking lot? So we wanna make sure that there's insurance in all cases because I don't know. It might be, they might just, they're just gonna say, well, I went to Spooky World.
We also have cameras in the back of the properties too.
Oh, good.
So we can see if somebody falls, if somebody goes back there.
But you won't know about it for two years and they will be erased. They will be.
Well, if somebody falls on my property, I'm keeping that for a long time. Cause you never know.
Well, we now know in at least two years.
Yeah, you never know.
I think my concern too is, is, and I understand what you're saying with that, but in, I've lived in Litchfield or right down the street for very, a, a, a lot of time and there have been multiple cars that park right on three A, right on three A for, for a, a good season. It was entirely down three A. Those people are walking back and forth. Those people are walking back and forth. I didn't even think that they would be allowed to park there, and yet they were, so, so what if they got hit?
Yeah, that we try and urge everybody not to park on three A is technically, you know, you know, so, that's why we have the police there, yeah.
But it's not enforced either. It hadn't been.
No, it's really hard there.
Probably like Jeff says, it's state law, they have to do anything with it.
Right.
Cause it's a state trap, it's a state.
So the only thing we would ask is we just don't wanna, we just want to reserve the right, we wanna work with the neighbors, we want them to park. We need to do it properly, we need you to have great signage displaying not only what the money amount is, cause it's different, and again, it's another problem for us, which is a problem. We advertise that it's so many dollars to park, they park in the neighbors, they don't realize it's not Spooky World parking, and they're fuming from the second that they get, they get at the ticket booth, they're screaming at our people. I've been ripped off, so I'm just saying.
And we do tell them that we are not affiliated with Spooky World.
We need that to be.
We absolutely say that we are not affiliated with it, this is private property, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I read that, yeah, that was pretty good.
Yeah, Ron did a great, Ron did a great job, Ron was awesome.
Yes, well, and I'm trying to uphold that, you know, absolutely.
So the next piece is again, we just don't wanna be pigeonholed into having to have that path there. At some point, if things don't work out, we we wanna work with you, we'll cut that hole in the back if the insurance lets us, we'll cut that and we're gonna work with you and we're gonna make this work. If something goes wrong and something is not working well, then we wanna, we wanna bring this back to the board at some point in the future. And you've gotta figure out some other way to get them there, whether it's that fifteen feet.
Sure.
That's all. We just wanna reserve the right that these, that there is no exit onto Strawberry Lane directly on our property. We wanna reserve that right. We're not saying that we won't do it, we just wanna reserve that right.
Why don't we just do it for a couple of years, try, see how it goes, and then you can.
Fine.
I was just, can we do it, can we do a time certain on a variance? Can we say variance is good for three years?
Yeah, why don't we do that, three or four years, and then we go back on it?
Okay, but real quick, the variance is not access, where, the variance is whether or not you can park on the park.
Right.
I mean, and then, so the variance, if the, and if the variance is approved, you can park on the land. How you can figure it out, I mean, we don't have the authority to even do that.
Hold on, folks, we have one person speaking at a time.
We we, as the board, we're we're just determining the variance.
I got you.
We have no authority on directing them not to what to what to all that stuff. We're, we can, we can have stipulation, yeah.
These stipulations are conditions.
Right, we can add stipulations to that.
Is that the planning board who decides that?
So my comment would be you could put in the stipulation for safety that access would not be allowed out.
On three A, right.
Uh, into the right of way on three A.
Pedestrian craft, yeah.
And then, and then again, and obviously you can't just trespass. So you can't just have an exit, uh, an entrance into an abiding property that you don't own.
That you don't own.
So if it's decided at any point that they don't wanna put any openings, that would be another, you know.
But that would be a reason.
So the variance would still allow it, but they wouldn't be able to do it without access.
Violating the other, the criteria of not going on.
That would be my one.
So I'd like to close off public input, any, anything else?
As a safety.
That you'd like to share with us before we close public input?
Are these the things you're talking about, the path and the direction that we went through for years, is that a planning board issue? Does this get directed to the planning board at that point? Cause this is essentially a business.
It may, yes.
Yeah, it's not the ZB A though, for sure.
Yeah, it's not ZB A though, yeah.
It's it's not, it's not a what?
A ZB A um item to discuss, or to 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 vote on.
Not your, your.
Jurisdiction.
But we don't know whether, who who would have that knowledge?
We'll have to make an decision.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just to be clear, I think we, I think we encompassed all of our concerns. Okay, we're good, we'll cut the hole in the back, we'll work together as a team.
I am a hundred percent willing to work with you, thank you, yes, yes.
And we'll improve all the signage, and we're there for you, and you're there for us.
Thank you.
We will, uh, I think it worked out, we used to, and we used to be fine when Ron did it, he was, he was good.
I will make him, I will definitely make him proud, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to um to complete public input. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so um we've stopped taking public input, we're gonna now deliberate on the variance.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
But I think, how would you like to proceed, John?
Well, I'll make a mo, I mean, I'm.
Well, hold on one second, I just wanna figure this little last piece out.
Okay.
We don't wanna walk along three, we don't wanna walk along, right? Okay, but if it's ro, I mean, event, people are going to, I mean, we should still have it roped off, right?
No, we are gonna rope, we are gonna put.
Right, I'm just saying, so I wanna make sure.
We're gonna put tape, we gotta tape.
It's roped off, and in the, in the event, in the event. And in the event that the, that doesn't all get worked out, that we still should have some sort of safety barrier or something. Obviously roped off isn't gonna stop.
So in our stipulation before, um, it was discussed um at, for parking, temporary parking, that that they discussed how they were going to control pedestrians.
I still think there should be some sort of protected way for folks who somehow break free. So I think this, we should have the stipulation there, even though they're not directing people that way, there should be some sort of.
To corn off, um, to eliminate our, to eliminate pedestrians on three A, it's essentially, we don't have to say how they do it, it's just that's the stipulation.
I would just, I would just say restrict pedestrian traffic.
Too strict.
Cause I think we can define, if the people who want to be involved, we can define.
Correct.
I mean, just people get excited, they stray, I just wanna make sure there's something there.
So you wanna make a motion?
So I was gonna make a motion that we approve the variance.
Based on?
Based on the five criterias that were presented to us with the um the following.
Stipulations.
Stipulations. One timeframe, I'd like to say match what we did for the Mel's property, I don't know what those dates were exactly.
That was, that was twenty-two days of Spooky World event.
Okay, so twenty-two days of Spooky World events, which is basically that, and then um that they shall put restrict, uh, restrict pedestrian traffic from Charles Bancroft.
Yep, from three A.
Which means at that point, they gotta partner up with Mel's to get access to Mel's property.
Yep.
Lighted parking areas, which I think is a safety concern, we don't say how to light, but they should be how to light.
Yeah, well, well, light the property, well, light the property, yeah.
And signage?
Uh, we don't, we don't have to worry about signage. Parking monitoring and ensure exit safety is the expectation.
Yep. Now, the issue around insurance came up, I don't think we can stipulate insurance. They don't have insurance if someone falls and sus, and that's their personal liability, town's not liable. I understand Mel's concern with regards to their name being pulled into this conversation, but it's really gonna be the owners of that property's concern. If they don't have the coverage, they don't have the coverage, and that's their.
Correct.
It's not that we can.
Any other stipulations?
I don't think we need to.
No.
You're good?
No, I'm good.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that variance passed three to zero.
Now, our next case is exactly the same case.
We still have to go through.
No, we still have to go through it, but.
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
It's your turn.
Introduce yourself and your, where you live.
My name is Rose Medina and I live in four forty-four Charles Bancroft Highway, Litchfield, New Hampshire, zip code oh three oh five two.
So this is gonna be case what, case zero nine one eight two oh two three dash two?
Yes, this is case zero nine one eight two oh two three dash two, a variance from LZO Article eight hundred dot zero zero, section eight oh one, to permit parking in the northern commercial district where parking is not a permitted use, name and applicant is Rose Medina.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I do. Thank you.
This is it. Yeah, this is it, good. Okay, um, do you have a copy of your?
I do.
Of your criteria? So you can summarize your um your request for variance and then go through the five criteria.
The variance will not be contrary to the public interest because function is limited, function of use will be under the superv- supervised control of police officer details and design flag attend, necessary safety will be provided to each designed flag attend flashlight cones, fluorescent flag, fluorescent vent. Foot traffic will not be accessed event to the main road, existing path from the previous ten plus year additional parking will be allowed for a better streamline of traffic in and out of event, listening traffic backups. Want me to keep going through all of them?
Yes, uh, stay with the criteria just so that you know what your, what are your answers.
Number two, spirit of ordinance and observe because this property slash land is located in a commercial zone that used to support the local commercial organization. This is New England's largest hunting attraction. This event brings in families from across New England to visit every year and is a very well-known event to the community. Number three, substantial justice is done because use is subject to specified date, uh, company, a seasoning event twenty to twenty-five. Specified dates, this is supported in local-owned business, bringing in patron and allowing them to additional access to the event. Revenue from this event is distributed to the town. There will, um, number four, value of surrounding properties are not diminished because there will be no altern- alternation to land or nature. This is an in temporary event, it's extremely popular, heavily advertised and is supported by that community, bringing the family across New England into the town for a fun, exciting, safe, and fun event. You want me to do number five too?
Yeah, for five, you can go right to the number two, um, the proper use is a reasonable one.
Literally enforcement of provision of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship and number two meaning B?
Uh, A, A one and two?
For the purpose of this sub-paragraph unnecessary hardship means that owning to a special condition that the property that distinguishes from the properties in the area. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and in a specific application of the provision to the property and the property used in reasonably one, no surrounding property will be affected by this event. There is no burden or hydrants to any objection property owner, there will be no adjustment to assisting property. Owners of four forty-six Charles Bancroft Highway have given us permission, fully support and effort. Being present will also support the owner of four forty-six, which is Vanessa, in effort to support a local community-based event.
Okay, and B is it necessary to enable reasonable use of it, and you can.
Unnecessary hardship will be demand to exist if and or only if owning that special condition to the property that distinguish it from the properties in the area, the property cannot be accessed unless in a strict conformance ordinance and variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonably use of it. Properties located in a commercial zone will be used for a commercial seasoning scheduled event.
Excellent. Can you describe um how you are preparing to allow for parking?
So I gave you guys a plan, we're doing it in the back in the, um, so we are going across to Vanessa's, so we're using.
Can you bring it, if he brings it on the screen, can you just go up to the screen and and explain it?
It's gonna be sideways, I apologize.
It's okay.
It's just the, it's just easier.
Three A is on top.
Someday, someday I'll build a flipper, I can get the tooling for it.
So we come in right from here. So there's a driveway, our driveway's right here, so the cars, we're gonna park here, here, and back here. Everybody comes up to my driveway and into the right, crossing through Vanessa, and then same thing, going through the same opening that we talked about earlier.
Okay, so that's the pedestrians, correct?
Yes.
Where the cars being parked?
So we usually park here, in the back of the house and in the front of the house.
Okay. And then when they exit.
This is what we're gonna block off, so nobody could go in the front.
To to minimize pedestrians on three A, correct?
Yep, yep, all this will be cut off. We usually cone, so as soon as we get in five cars, we put cones here and we keep flagging them so they can keep going. Around here is the entrance to the back of my house in the cornfield, so they can use that for them.
So how will the cars exit once, once they're done?
So they got two driveways, either my driveway here or the other driveway here that we usually do with Vanessa.
Okay.
So usually two on one side and two on the other side, which is me and my friend and Hunter and his friend, who stay in here and here. And as soon as cars will come, we take the cones out, they'll come out and put the cones right back inside.
Is there any um lighted parking areas?
Yep, all this is light, the back of my house has three lights facing the parking, and in here I have a shed, it has three lights facing here. All this is here, it's coming, my lights here, and in the front of the house, we usually put lights here and lights on the side to eliminate the whole front too.
Very good. Any questions from the board? Jerry?
No, no questions.
Is there any um any butters that would like to speak in favor or against um this variance?
Yes, hi, Wakefield, Spooky World. Let's just run through all those things one more time, please, if you don't mind, cause we're gonna be technical about this. If you don't mind, some of the issues we have is we we want excellent signage, stating that it's not Spooky World that we're asking for. We're also asking, please, to have incredible lighting, also rope off on three A.
Yep.
Also, I'd like to note once again that we did not have sufficient notice for this meeting, we did not have time to represent ourselves, since we literally found out the meeting was an hour and a half ago. We did receive the signed, um, you know, the signed registered letter, which both was sent on September twelfth. It was sent, yet it doesn't have, it says Monday, July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three is the meeting date, which is entirely incorrect. And I'd like to reserve that right if we choose to to talk to an attorney about that, I just wanna reserve that right, wanna make that clear. I'd also really like to know what, uh, immediately, within a week or so if possible, if you plan to take this to the planning board, what the next step is, please. Maybe is a week fair enough? What is the timeframe on the, on notification anyway?
It's five days.
Five days, okay, so five days, five business days, okay.
It raises a question though.
The correct notice should have gone out for the date immediately.
Can you show them the uh?
Yeah, we got, we got two letters, we got this one, but then we ended up getting the correct one.
The correct one did not give us the five days' notice, right?
Yes. Uh, it did to us today. They came literally back to back, one came in one day and then the next one came the other day right away. And Jeff advised me that I was gonna get the other one, not to worry about it, and the other one came literally the next day.
Okay, um, and just, you know, I just wanna make sure all those things, that everything works well, I know we just have to go through that again, cause I know it's a technical thing one more time.
No, and that's fine, we will put.
Rope up on three day, excellent lighting, all this.
Light everywhere and I'll make sure if I, we'll get a sign. And you tell us how you want, we could put not officially, uh, officially related with Spooky World or just put private property. This is a private property, so they can know that it's nothing, we're not together with Spooky World or anything at all.
And then insurance is a concern for us as well, cause it is essentially a business that you're starting, and and again, that's gonna fall back on Spooky World if someone gets injured.
So we, so we do have insurance on a pro property, but it's just for the parking, so like they said, has nothing to do.
Um, yes, if you'd like to.
So, so wait, wait, I just, yeah, sure. So last year, we did have a couple instances where um you guys did put up a, a, I mean, a giant sign right in the, in the front driveway that said official Spooky World parking, and yet there was an arrow that pointed down, but I mean, you know as well as I do, a lot of people may confuse that and everything like that. So I just wanna make that clear that like, we we have never advertised as being official Spooky World parking, but yet we did have a giant sign in both of our driveways last year, put there by Spooky World with our permission, of course, that may have made it a little confusing, so I mean, if that's, I mean, now you guys are totally against it.
We're not adverse to working together. We're not adverse to it, that's not adverse, we just wanna make sure it's done right. Okay, it's, it's fine. We're gonna work out well together, I think we'll be fine, I think we're gonna be good.
You both need each other.
He's not here to defend us.
No, he is, he's.
All right, thank you, is that, is that, is that it?
Uh, yeah, that's all.
Are there any other, um, any other butters that would like to speak in favor or against the variance? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to uh close public input, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, do you see any difference from this one?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, I don't, I mean, I I think it's the same situation, same conditions, same stipulations, exactly. It sounds like, again, if they partner well with Spooky World and the the folks that run that that show. It sounds like, again, if they partner well with Spooky World and the folks that run that, that show, it'll all go well. If it doesn't, if it breaks down, it's another issue, but we're, we're here for the variance only. So I, you know, I, I mean, I'll, I'll make the motion, but I'll make the motion to be approve the request for variance on section eight oh one, dot zero zero, of the zoning ordinance to follow reasons, basically, seasonal, sorry, additional parking, event parking for a seasonal schedule for twenty twenty-five days, again, based on our stipulation at four forty-two Charles Bancroft Highway.
And that is for case zero nine one eight two oh two three dash two?
Yes.
That, let me see, the same stipulation would be lighted parking areas, restricting pedestrians on three A.
Yep.
And exit parking monitoring, I think those were the main ones. And only good for the twenty-two days of Spooky World event, correct?
Yep, concur.
Okay, any further discussion?
I don't have any.
Hearing none, all in favor of the variance for case oh nine one eight two oh two three dash two, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion, that variance passes three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, it's time to break.
Okay, yes.
That's it.
At this time, is there?
I bet you want to do something else.
Is there any other business for the ZBA?
I don't have any.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Do we need to approve the minutes or anything like that?
I don't think you'll be able to, because I'm here, so you can't.
Okay, all right, because I, I saw him on there, okay, all right, then we're good, yeah.
So there's a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.